Plated and insured, I figure you are under the same penalties as any other big killer traffic. You're plated and insured, you're operating under the same laws. If you're speeding, you'll get ticketed the same as if you were speeding in a car. If you ran a stop sign, you'll get ticketed the same as if you ran a stop sign in your car.
Keep it open, right, so I can read it.
You know, I was just gonna say, I'm kinda pleased that the way this is going now, it kinda seems like it's getting back to our original intent, for sure. But I really would like to see it tonight before we take it one more step.
I would entertain a motion there for to table until the next meeting, so the candidates may be reviewed. But that's...
Cause they're just along there.
I understand. Scott?
Yeah, one thing there, what I'd like to do is have Steve Trey Towns and get over to Judge Bishop. Because all the juvenile infractions are going to be going to his court. Um, municipal court doesn't hear juvenile infractions.
Sure.
So, um, that might be something that she can entertain as far as the rights and penalties for juveniles. Uh, because the law's changed immensely on juvenile bails and industry defeats and things of that nature. So she can just touch base with that and incorporate it into your changes that you're looking at.
Did you have any...
No, I think you guys are on the right path.
Okay. You think you feel that's an enforceable way to go?
The changes that you're talking about?
Yeah.
I really enjoyed the separations. I really did.
We really need some kind of definition in there of this kind of part to keep track of who was what and others.
You know, I did, just on that, no. Uh, you know, I think, um, we were driving at night, uh, and there were several of the two TV there. They were crossing, I think, Great Mason Highway, and it's nighttime, but you can see them just as though they're vehicles and they, you know, it was fine. I think that distinction is well made, because, um, they, I mean, they were all very, just abiding all the laws that the rest of us were. And so, yeah, I don't see a problem with that, but like you said, with the four-wheelers, that's an issue.
Four-wheelers and third bikes, a lot of these are different. And you're gonna have a different class of people operating those as well.
To a point.
Go ahead. Terry, is there something you want to add?
Yeah, I just wanted to clarify. That was probably our plug.
It was, yeah. We saw you, we saw you at dinner later that night.
We were on our annual Christmas lights.
Right.
And we talked to the sheriff last year about that. It's been long since we've been hanging ourselves. Correct?
Any further discussion about this? I'll lend a hand on something about the directions you'd like to take.
I'll move to table until we can see the changes that were discussed tonight.
We'll bring it back for a second.
There won't be an additional public hearing, that's for sure.
Be a second.
Why didn't you spell it?
Do I have a second? Did I?
I'll second.
Any further discussion?
No.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Carry it in so order. Uh, we will move on to item nine. Items for discussion, possible action of the Ely City Council as recommended by the Municipal Utility Board. Item one, board members, city clerkly, discussion for possible actions. Approval of the agreement for the adjustment of utility facilities. Contract between the City of Ely and Nevada Department of Transportation, the MDOT. How to do it?
The municipal agreement approval, it brings their attention that our city attorney has pointed out that current agreement is, um, just mentions reimbursement, it doesn't explicitly state reimbursement for engineering fees. But Mike Crewill with MDOT would prefer that free payment for that, and he'll be here next week. BJ, did you have any thoughts on that?
No, we were correct, exactly what she said. The only thing, a little extension there, Mike had just said, his initial first shot at the agreement would be coming here. And kinda like the utility agreements now, that is up for tonight's approval. If at the end of the day, they're paying for sixty percent of our water, ninety percent of our sewer, or whatever it may be, um, then he carries those same percentages over into the engineering services department. Cause other than that, it'd be very hard to try to break up the powers and everything else. So, he said that would be his first shot at it. I agree, that should be the first shot, then come back to you back.
Any questions for BJ and her fellow members? All in your hand and motion?
I'll do the approve.
Do I have a second?
One second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Carry it in so order. We move on to item two, board members, city clerkly, discussion for possible action. Consideration and possible approval to remove the pass-through utility fee penalties in the amount of one hundred and ninety-eight dollars and sixty cents from one twenty-six Main, South Main Street in Route Nevada at the request of the property owner, Antoinette Erickson. How to do it?
The utilities on recommend approvals.
Okay. I'll entertain a motion on this item.
I'll move to approve.
Do I have a second?
Both, sir.
Do we have any discussion on this? Or questions?
I know that, yeah, I think this is 5.418, and I'm okay with that, cause I really have issues over waiving all of these. But it says right in this agreement they have, that all legal fees then will be attached to the bill. So we're away from legal fees to them. And there's legal fees involved, isn't it, part of the agreement they signed?
I believe it's just the...
It says the liquid bill and all legal fees.
If any.
Well, evidently probably lean.
Those wouldn't be considered legal fees, though, those would just be violent fees. And what they're referencing here are penalties, and I checked the account, and it's one hundred and ninety-eight dollars and sixty cents. So, so it is, it's a penalty.
What a sweetheart view.
Any further discussion on that? Anybody else? I have a first and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Carry it in so order. Item three, board members, city clerkly, discussion for possible action. Consideration and possible approval to remove the pass-through utility fee penalties in the amount of one thousand ten dollars and twenty cents from the commercial property, number one Main Street, Route Nevada, at the request of the property owner, Frank Collins. How does the utility board recommend this?
I recommend approval.
Um, I will entertain a motion on this.
I'll move to approve.
Do I have a second?
Both, sir.
Any discussion on this item? Same now, a couple of votes, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Carry it in so order.
So just to clarify, Councilman Spear on the last item, so you stated aye, but you're actually voting nay. Is that correct? On your grant, you were opposed.
Yeah, I'm nay then, alright.
Item ten, items for discussion, possible action only of the Ely City Council consent agenda. Um, we've got minutes for December fifth and... We've got zip, and then the bills for the nineteenth and the thirtieth. Are there any questions about either of those? All in your hand and motion? For the bills and minutes?
Some more.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Carry it in so order. Some other things, Ernie. Item B, old business councilman Fungus, discussion for possible action. Approval of resolution twenty twenty dash one, changing the time for regular city council meetings to one P.M. I will entertain a motion on this.
Also move.
Do I have a second? Any second to his motion?
Did you hear Councilman Spear's motion? Did you hear Councilman Spear's motion?
No, I didn't.
He made a motion to approve that resolution.
I'm calling for a second.
I'm sorry.
Uh, discussion on the side?
Yeah, just another thing. We have cleaned up all our ordinances, but under twenty-five dash five, regularly, city council shall hold its fees on the second and fourth thirty of each month at four o'clock. It's in our ordinance. And we've been having a live talk, I think it does need to be changed. Four o'clock is suggested, alright, and I don't have any problem with that. But I think if, oh, clean them up, we've been violating our own ordinance, how long?
No, we haven't, Councilman Spear, because that code also provides that the time and date of the city council meetings can be changed by resolution. And it was changed by the city council a few years ago.
Then why don't you change your ordinance?
Does a resolution need to change?
Because the ordinance provides that those two items can be changed by resolution.
Everything I have heard from the community is that they believe that changing the time to one P.M. eliminates the community members from coming, not eliminates, impedes community members from attending these meetings. And they are, one comment I read that said, if people wanna be there, they will make it there no matter what time it is. One comment, out of probably fifty, from people that I've spoken to in the community, comments online. So, that's what the voters of Ely are saying.
Thank you for that. Any other comment or discussion here?
Well, I love the way you're coming to this, especially, if you look at the audience, how many people do you have out there? I would say, one o'clock, we didn't have more people attending, just time, it's only accessible for their kids. It's time to prepare dinner or other activities that they have. If it's a business thing that they have to bring up to the city council, doesn't matter what time you have, they will leave. And I'm looking at the fact that we, well, take a look at the membership. It works for the city that is here now, spending time on their own time like we are at the time. And some of them who appear here are beyond overtime. Other groups and business groups, our legal groups, county commission, for instance, and whatnot, all are in the morning. They start their meeting, their private meeting, nine o'clock, public meeting starts at ten o'clock. I think with the problems that we have in this area, in the wintertime especially, a lot of people do not come to the meeting because they don't wanna be out in the cold, or slip and fall on the ice in the snow. We've got to look at the public that could attend. And if they would, it would be far more easier for them in the afternoon than it would be in the evening.
Thank you, Councilman Fungus, any other discussion? We have a first and a second, I'd like a roll call over.
Councilman Fungus?
I'm going to pay a round of applause.
Councilman Carson?
Nay.
Councilman Spear?
Aye.
Councilman Alworth?
Nay.
Councilman Leacher?
Nay.
Motion fails.
Thank you. Uh, we move on to item two, Mayor Robertson, discussion for possible action. First reading of ordinance seven two nine, bill number twenty nineteen dash thirteen, with approval to move to second reading. Ordinance seven two nine amends Title One, Chapter Six, entitled City Officers and Employees, codifying the city's existing authority to appoint a fire chief and describing the fire chief's duties, and adding Chapter Six, entitled Ely City Fire Department, to Title Seven, codifying the existing Ely City Fire Department and its existing functions and duties. This was something we moved from the last one, so we could take another crack at the draft before it showed up, before the board is all that. As was mentioned, our city code doesn't provide any direction on a fire chief or fire department, and these are some of the, as this is the largest department in our organization, having some, just some of the same language that we have for some of the others was prudent, and making sure that we had some... Like I said, this wasn't something to address a problem they're having with these departments right now, but twenty years down the road, we wanna be sure that whoever in the seat, that you guys are in, knows what to do. Knows how to hire a fire chief, knows what's prescribed in the code, knows what's prescribed in analyzing the fire department. This is the first reading of this. We can edit it, we can change it, we can roll it out and start over. We've got a process here, and this is where we're at. So, I will entertain discussion on this item.
Um, just a typo, I think it's a typo. On number one six J, it says fifty-four years of professional firefighting experience. I think that's a typo.
A little excessive?
If you can write in a comment.
Sure. Ross, we'd like to hear your quick answer.
Because I didn't know that we had to have any comments on this.
In this situation, you don't have to fumble, you're a professional advisor.
Yeah, but I mean, was there supposed to be a public comment?
There will be a hearing for the second reading of this.
Oh, okay, that's okay.
Yeah.
Okay, let's see where we're going. Forget that zero was too late. Dead in all, it was fifty-four years of experience. On one six J, six seven, under D, it says, Nevada Class B license, the tanker in Northwood. I would leave the word minimum in there, but I have a class A, to see that. So that'd be allowed, or I'd say eighty percent.
I think the minimum would be appropriate.
Under seven sixteen one, apartment three, um, it says, it says, it says, it is apartment within the Public Safety Department oversees the Ely Volunteer Department. I don't think, it oversees organization. I would probably word that a little different, maybe it oversees volunteers when they respond to an incident, something like that.
I believe some of that was existing already in the federal government.
No, that's probably through change to...
Yeah, I can't find the way to that. Seven sixteen one, apartment three.
To distinguish the two, which is volunteer, the Ely Volunteer Department, apartment five, one C three.
Separate from the city.
Yes.
What would we change or recommend?
Uh, just to oversee the Ely Volunteer Department during response, or to any incident, and given, something like that. What would we do?
We would change the licenses to this one, because right now, it implies that we oversee them as an organization. And we just oversee them when they respond and are on duty with our fire department.
And I guess, I believe it's seven, just like below that permission statement. Middle line where it goes, uh, technicalized property incurred by fire accidents. And it says, and set in medical, i.e., I don't, it's just my opinion, it should be, uh, comma, emergency medical services, and to any given emergency needs of the citizens of our community. Cause it could be something on there, could be, like, just not fire, you know. So that, it's a little bit, so I had, and my changes to permission statement was, emergency medical services, and to any given emergency needs of the citizens of our community in professional manner, with a support from our city leaders. And... Um, division. I have a bunch of documents that I have to find in place here, but I had, uh, the second line, we have chosen to protect the lives of property and the system of our community. And then I would put, and the same professional care will also be extended to the powers and lenders to our heirs. Instead of, that's what I think. That's just my thoughts on it.
I'll get it, thank you, Ross.
And then I have one more, on, under duties. Seven sixteen fifty-two, first line, the Ely City Fire Department's hereby cast and provide fire protection. And I would put slash prevention, or common prevention, emergency medical services, and so on, I would just add the word prevention. That's all. Just, just, just one thought.
Any other?
Do I have more, Mr. Mayor?
Yeah.
There'd be, uh, okay, there. It'd be under essential functions, one dash six J, I'd like to add a line. Since trainings with volunteers is so important, I'd like to see something, trainings will be provided by the city fire department staff members via scheduled training for the Ely Volunteer Fire Department. Let the paid men, the career professional staff, put the training together. For the years, it's been done through the volunteer rank, it's done, we have a member, I, probably everybody in the department's done it. It does not work. It goes for a short period of time, and it ends up. I think the amount of new people, I should make a disclaimer, first of all, I'm no longer with the Ely Volunteer Fire Department, I went inactive on November eighteen. Sorry for not saying that earlier. But I believe that training for the amount of new people that have gotten in the department, they look at the career staff as the professionals. I think there'll be more enough to go to the training, that whoever the chief designates as a training people, they're all the training officers, all the duty people, how he wants to schedule it. And then it's coming from a professional rank, not from a volunteer rank. So I'd like to see a line in their training, will be provided to the ELYFD members by city fire department staff members.
How would that affect, I mean, doesn't like Steve Dodi do some training now?
It, 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 I don't...
You'd rather not have him do that, or if he's designated by Ross, it's okay for him to still do that?
No, Dodi in medical, you know, he has training officers.
I don't really see it affecting having volunteers up from training if they meet the standard, with what we do have.
I kind of agree with him, though, it probably should be designated and coordinated through our department.
Yes, and I think, I think it's because of the tracking, due track training, as we talked about earlier, and they, the tracking is documented and filed with the fire department. Also, that we try to do the training beneath the state standards, whether it be MS or fire, or hazmat. Training is overseen by the State Fire Marshal's Office for the fire, so, I'd be okay.
Have them, have them your staff members?
Yes, have them our staff members coordinate, because we wanna make sure we meet the state standard.
Any other discussion? Anybody else? Um, I will entertain a motion. I'll move versus you. Would you, a motion that we do have with you that's different?
Who's the guest?
Yeah. And we'll get together with you and anybody else to make sure those edits make it onto the second reading. I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Carry it in so order, and thanks to the fire department and all those who have worked on this, Jim and Jennifer and everybody else. Quite an undertaking, the whole program, folks here, so. We'll move on to item C, business council members, this is Mr. Trevor Jackson. In Burdick, CPAs represented for discussion for possible action, presentation, and possible acceptance of the year-end June 30th, twenty nineteen fiscal audit for the City of Ely prepared by Kittington and Christensen CPAs. The moment we've all been waiting for. They never gonna wear out those stairs today.
I'm done here.
I think, you know, you got good, you're good, thank you.
As you said, very, very long wait, I'm pleased to be here, and present my, uh, really quick introduction. My name is Jacob Sol, and I'm one of the CPAs that works for the County Department of Labor. Normally, McKay Hall, who is one of our audit partners, has been here to present. Unfortunately, he was unable to make it today, so he asked me to come in and present this audit to you. So you should have received two handouts. The large one is the actual financial statements, the final version with the auditors reporting and everything. And then, the other, it's only a three-page document, it has the slides. Normally, we would do a slide show presentation, but in talking with McKay and Jim, I decided it would be easier to just have it printed out, rather than trying to go to the other projector and involve that going. But getting started, a couple things I wanted to say. First off, a large thank you to the city and the staff, particularly the, all of the accounting and financial staff. They've been a huge help for us during the process of the audit. As all of you are aware, this process ended up taking longer than usual this year, and I'll go into that in a little bit as well. My big thank you to all of you. The city staff has been very, very helpful and very responsive, going to, to assist me in everything that I was prepared of. Uh, the second, if you want just a really, a fairly in-depth, but still an overview of the financial statements, page three of your, the larger packet, has the management discussion and analysis. It's about six pages long, but it has a really, a really good, high-level overview of everything that's in the financial statements, you can review as you have time, if you don't feel like reading the entire, you know, hundred pages of that. But getting into the actual audit, there's two main areas I want to cover. The first is kind of the audit process and the audit findings and report. And then the second is the actual financial position of the city that we saw as a result of the audit. So first off, the audit report, again, as mentioned, the audit was performed by the County Department of Penitention and Christensen, and they did issue an unmodified opinion. What this means is that the financial statements that you have before you represent, in all material respects, the financial accurately, the financial position of the City of Ely as of June thirtieth, twenty nineteen. And if, oh, I should mention also, if you have any questions at any point, please feel free to interrupt me, and maybe go over any questions you have. Uh, there were, going on to a total of three findings this year. The previous year, there were two findings. Uh, the two compliance findings are actually reissued findings, so the same findings from the previous year. Uh, the compliance and internal control finding is a new one. And then the next line has a little more detail on those. So the material weakness that was determined by the auditors had to do with your end closing procedures. And again, this ties into, I know a lot of you found the question of just why did the audit take, you know, why did it go longer this year? Uh, a lot of it kind of started, and I don't really wanna throw anybody under the bus, uh, but there were a couple employees that left during the year that had, um, just the way that they had done through the transactions wasn't quite correct. It was, they were entered in such a way that we didn't catch it initially, as we were helping out with some of the bank reconciliations, and some of those other procedures. And ideally, we would have caught all of the issues then. Unfortunately, they were in the system, and we didn't notice that there were things that were wrong until later. Treasure Trask and I, as we start preparing for the audit, we were able to correct a lot of it. But then again, as the auditors came in, they found even more things that needed to be corrected. There was a pretty good handful of general entries that needed to be done. And then the back and forth on getting taken, getting all of that taken care of, ended up taking a lot longer. Again, that's not where we wanted to be. And we've already been talking with, with Jennifer Lee and Jennifer Trask on how we can improve that for this coming year, and being able to get them everything they need, so that the transactions throughout the year will all be entered correctly, and then the end of your procedures will be much smoother process. So hopefully that makes a little more sense. Again, as I said, if you have any questions, please let me know, and then we can go on to greater detail as we do. Uh, the two compliance findings, as I mentioned, were both reissued findings. The first were dealing with the landfill closure and post-closure. There's a separate bank account that is set up. That account needs to be specified as a trust. We've already worked, again, with Jennifer Lee and Jennifer Trask, in order of the requirements of this, to meet the actual setup as a trust, have a trustee in place, and all of that, and so we believe that will be the intention of, in the near future, so that one is not already a finding again. And then finally, the budgetary compliance. Uh, in the previous year, there were, I believe it was just one or two funds, or departments in the general fund that were over budget. This year, there were a total of nine funds that were over budget. It wasn't, it wasn't particularly large amounts, other than... It wasn't, it wasn't particularly large amounts, other than we recorded in the expense for the building out at the shooting range. And the budget never got augmented for that expense, and so that one is way up.